Five thirty, I've run in and call our meeting to order this evening at this time of ten. People look up and play some. And we don't have any public, but we do have a student recognition tonight. We have two students, and if one shows up, we'll stop.
She's here.
But we have Ms. Hayden from in here, and we want to recognize her. Last year she had perfect attendance. She didn't miss any school. And so the school board would like to present her with a perfect attendance certificate, and a check for one hundred dollars, and a little tiny Vegas surprises. So do you want to take a picture with Mom and Dad? Open it, yeah, and little brother too? There you go sweetheart.
That was the second year in a row.
Second year in a row.
Oh, second year in a row.
I'm taking a picture with you too.
Oh, okay. Okay, Mom and Dad, here you go.
And brother, just a good brother there.
And this is also yours. And does Grandma want to get in the picture?
No.
She wants to take the picture.
Really, really, three, two, one, three, two, one.
But we want to thank you, and then I want to thank your Mom and Dad for leaving an education and sending your daughter to school for the last two years.
Oh, brother, brother, you shake hands?
Oh, that's shake hands.
Oh, there you go.
Is it? Want to shake hands? Thank you. The other one was Lucas Klein, and he didn't show up this evening, and he had perfect attendance also. So we will get this to him. All right, moving on to adopt the agenda. I'm gonna with the, I would like to take G into executive session on the agenda.
Just G?
For the consent agenda, just G, I'd like to take it to executive session. Does anybody have anything else?
No.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
No.
Moved by Dad?
I'll second.
Second by Michelle. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Superintendent, report.
You have my report there, an update with our strategic planning. Dr. Juno Butler was here last week, and she completed her data collection phase. She met with all principals, so now she's met with principals, board, community members, Boys and Girls Club, other people on the admin team, and she's putting together kind of a report. Once we get it, then I'll share it with you. After your recommendation for the J policies, Josh is working on those. Hope to have them by the next board meeting for you guys to approve. You have your upcoming dates and travel, and then tonight we have your elementary principals reporting. And this year, because they all went through the comprehensive needs assessment last year, I want them to share their school success plans with you, which are monitored by a school success facilitator throughout the year to ensure that they're implementing what they planned for last spring. Okay? Do you guys have any questions for me at this point?
No, I don't. Who's going to start first? Okay, okay.
We have three primary actions in our action plan. One is for staff to participate in science of reading training, literacy training. So we are doing that in a couple of different ways. We have people, a couple of people sign up for the nearly year-long state program. We had a half dozen people participate in the summer state program. And then we are also offering something at each in-service related to science of reading training. Action two is about using the district's Otis software to track math assessment data. We've gotten the initial training. We do not have any assessments in there yet. And then action three was about staff participating in what we call professional learning communities related to math, specifically to do some unit planning. And that, although it seems to be a math teacher's job, actually really encompasses everybody in the building participating, because we do that from eight o'clock to nine o'clock. So teachers identify their group, does the date that they would need the unit plan done. And then someone else, whether it's a PE teacher, a literacy specialist, music teacher, someone goes in and does morning meeting and supervises their class from eight o'clock to nine o'clock. So that requires a lot of effort on everybody's part, and that has been working well. Everybody's been able to do that. We finished county, I think, with five hundred and ten kids. We have a few more kindergartners in earlier, which we think is good news, because they do seem to trickle in throughout the first semester. And we did find out on Friday that we made our SPI growth for the school report card, which is a very complicated formula as far as meeting that. And we did go up ten points, and we were excited. Any questions for us?
Do you have a parent group there, Bobby?
We do.
How many parents do you have actively involved in it, would you say?
Like consistently, every time, or like on any given meeting?
On any given meeting.
Probably like ten-ish.
Yeah. So is, what are they, do you know what they're working on, who sits on that as a staff member?
The, the one we have that goes to the meetings with HED Cuffs group. We have two that sit on that, and we're working, our last time we worked on an action plan to put out the family chat coming up next in a couple of weeks. Yeah, the seventeenth, and so we're working on that right now. Then the other, the other group of people that come in, they come in during the family chats. They, it's the same, usually the same people that come every single time.
We're a core group and then like a couple extras that are varying.
Okay.
We did, we did host the vision clinic. We did hearing screens already this year, and they did identify like eight students that need professional hearing checks. And our dental will be starting soon, so we love like health and wellness related stuff going on too.
And you're doing a drive for shoes. Anybody out there in Falcon Land that hears that drop? You've got little shoes.
We're also doing a food pantry too. Our social worker, Mr. Bill, is doing a food pantry. So if anybody has food to drop on.
We're always short on shoes. I cannot emphasize that enough.
Shoes, pants, underwear, socks.
Do you work with Treealife too?
Treealife is a really, has been a really good partner for us.
And the Tribe Social Services Program today.
Shoes are just generally hard to come by. The woman that organized the native eyes thing is hooking us up now with like a shoe connection that might be able to help.
She also called me last week, and she's getting some eyeglass case donations from the Lions Club. So keep an eye on it.
We need to get some donated as well. Keep an eye out for those.
We also have toys for Taks.
Oh, yes.
Nice.
Nice. Thank you.
You're up.
Okay, so we're gonna, Josh is gonna share a PowerPoint presentation. Last year when we presented at this time, Melissa, you asked me a direct question. You said, is your staff doing responsive classroom?
Yep.
And I don't know, do you remember my response?
You weren't one hundred percent sure all of them were.
Yeah, I was actually one hundred percent sure that all of them were.
Yeah.
Well, you want to say that. I was trying to be encouraging my baby.
Yeah, that's where we went, and that's where our CNA process showed. Our CNA process showed us that we had sixteen classrooms operating kind of independently, not necessarily toward the same goal. So that's what our focus is this year, so I'm gonna, we're gonna share with you our action, and we're gonna share some highlights of the year.
Awesome.
The way of the Panther, if you go back and forth please, Josh. The way of the Panther, first of all, is I am kind, I am curious, I am courageous, and I am committed. And that's for staff and students alike, that we stress that. Thank you, Josh. Our action, the thing that we're working on mainly is this, this is what is stated in our plan. It's about universal protocols. It's about everyone following the same routine, the same procedures, school-wide. It's about operating as a school-wide team. That's what our focus is. And so I am hap, like, like when I hear Bobby say that they made forty points on their SPI, you know, I'm really, I'm thrilled to hear that, so congratulations to you two. We're at thirty points, and Rosebud has been at thirty points for years. And I want to change that, maybe three years, maybe a few years, but our goal is to change that. And so we looked at some of the things that they're doing there in terms of responsive classroom and in terms of small reading groups, and those are things that we are beginning this year. So I'm happy to say that before school began, all of our teachers had responsive classroom training. We had a week of training at Rosebud the week before teachers reported back to work. And then after our, our international teachers arrived, they all have participated in the first two days. So everyone at Rosebud is responsive classroom trained. You can go ahead and change. Taking kind of a football theme here, you know, I feel like we're, I love sports analogies. Anyone who knows me knows that sports analogies are coming. And we're like a team, and we have, we have several crafty veterans at Rosebud. You can see Ms. Tammy and Ms. Oyate there. Ms. Tammy and Ms. Oyate did something that not many teachers do. They changed positions. They went from, I mean, they changed positions so much dramatically. Ms. Oyate went from a first grade teacher last year to a fifth grade teacher this year. Ms. Tammy went from a, a Teacher of the Year third grade position last year to a first grade position this year. They did this because it was for the good of the school. So, so we're very excited for them. They're both very excited about what they're doing. They're learning new things. Mrs. Hamper there, you can see in the back, Mrs. Hammerton, who did a morning meeting, is one of the, she could win Teacher of the Year at any school, any given year. We're glad to have Mrs. Hammer, and I put, I put Ev up there because I want to shout out staff. That's my highlights. My highlights tonight is staff. Ev Felix does a fantastic job as a, as a custodian, as a bus driver. He's just a true professional through and through. Love them all. Okay, after the crafty veterans, I want to highlight our rookies. Because we have, we have three teachers who were, two of them, two of them were student teachers last year. Maggie on the left, Ms. Rain at the top. Ms. Rain went to Spring Creek School. Ms. Rain is now a certified classroom teacher, teaching second grade. Ms. Maggie is on her way to certification. Is that my five minutes already? Ms. Maggie worked as a para last year. Do we need to check the ground rules? Yes, I'm sure it was completely planned. Okay, Maggie was working as a para last year in a first grade classroom. She is, she is now a kindergarten teacher. And the guy at the bottom right, that's Zach Stewart. Zach Stewart was actually one of my students in fourth and fifth grade at Rosebud, and he is absolutely crushing it as a PE teacher, because at the last minute, our PE teacher resigned. Zach is the long-term sub, working toward his certificate so he can become a full-time PE teacher. And these three are just absolutely fantastic rookies at Rosebud. Thank you, Josh. Okay. Now, every football coach goes in college, and sometimes you've got to go to the portal to get some talent. And we went to the portal. So we brought in from the Philippines, Ms. Debbie in the upper right, who is an absolute master teacher, teaching second grade at Rosebud. Ms. Aname on the left there is teaching fourth grade. She teaches fourth grade writing. And last year, we had like thirty, forty percent improvement in our writing and the writing breakdowns on the South Dakota test. So we're very excited about what Ms. Aname has done. And then we brought in Alexis to teach kindergarten. So that's our talent from the portal. We have two others that I'll have to recognize on the next, on the next slide. On this slide, you're gonna see Ms. Jay and Ms. Andrea. Ms. Andrea, this is, I, I, she said, I said, I'm gonna come in. I said, I'm gonna come in and watch you teach music, because she, she arrived late. She's, oh no, Mr. Chris, oh no, it's the first day. And I said, oh, come in. So I went in first day, first class. This is Ms. Andrea teaching kindergarten music, and that's Ms. Jay on the left. All right, Josh. I thought it was important to share this, because when I sat in that room, I was just absolutely filled with joy. You know, it's the first time in a year and a half that we've had real music at, at Rosebud. And when, and Ms., Ms. Jay, Jay Rose is a kindergarten teacher, and she is just the kindest, most joyful teacher. I'm really glad to have her. And, and Ms. Andrea, as you can see, she, there was no reason for me not to go in there. She's totally ready, and she totally rocked that class. I think your students are also have high praise for Ms. Andrea. Okay, thank you, Josh. And what we're working toward is, I think, responsive classroom is there. The responsive classroom. So each day begins with a morning meeting. You can see here we have morning meetings going on, fifth grade, fourth grade, kindergarten at the bottom, Ms. Maggie on the left. And it really has changed the way school begins. If you walk into any classroom, you know the first ten minutes, fifteen minutes of school, what students are gonna be doing. They're gonna be getting a greeting from their teacher. They're gonna be sharing with each other. They're gonna be receiving a message from the teacher, and they're going to be doing a pretty simple activity to get the day started. So the, the pieces of responsive classroom that they've been doing for years at TCES and that we're starting now are already having a good impact on Rosebud. We have morning meeting in the morning. We have quiet time after lunch. We have closing circle before the end of the day, as well as other routines and other pieces from responsive classroom throughout the day, like energizers and things like that. And the second piece that we're working on this year is small group reading. Oh, this is Ms. Debbie again. I just love to look on the students' faces as they're engaged in discussion, listening to each other. Thank you, Josh. Magnetic letters are all over Rosebud this year. Magnetic letters are the thing. Because magnetic, magnetic letters are a big piece of small group reading programs in tandem and footprints that we've begun this year. And we shared last week at the BLT meeting, we had high fives all the way around, because we started something new, and it's kind of a big endeavor. Like, you've been doing it for years, but it, but it's the kind of, you could put off, oh, we're not quite ready, we're not ready yet, put off another week. We said, no, we're starting Monday, and we did, and we've been doing it imperfectly since. But the goal is to someday become more perfect at it. And this is what small group reading looks like. And we're also very happy to have KKB help us not only with our small group reading, but with our implementation of being a reader. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Are your teachers excited about responsive classroom?
I think they are. Yes, they are. They're excited about the potential it can bring. And as I said, we, you know, we're not running the place perfectly yet, but we will, we'll get there.
Yeah.
Every, every day I go in a classroom, I see, I see the messages up, and it's just, I just, I love it. And we start, we start every day with a, a whole school morning meeting. You know, with the flag song, the morning message, celebrations.
Do you have a parent group at your school too?
We have the parent engagement team. Outside of that, we don't have a parent group operating.
Explain how that works.
So the parent engagement team is, is the team that, are the parents that are involved with the family chats that happen in the spring and the fall. And we have, I think, I think we have three parents on the committee. And we had six to ten parents show up for the first family chat that we had in September.
Sounds great.
Yes, I'm excited for it.
We're excited too.
I'm excited for you to be in your new school.
I know. We're really excited about it.
That's what I'm really excited about, because I've been up there periodically to see the process.
I know. That's great. We thank you for all the work.
And can I maybe to hear from you? We have, this is the first time I think we've seen you, so what do you got? Not just by, yeah, anything for us, like a panda chair, something.
But for Linkview, I was looking at the old plan, because this year we'll be doing the CNA now, I guess.
Yep.
So that one mostly focused on attendance, math, and OSU's, specifically not just teaching it on its own, but like incorporating it into other subjects like math and social studies and reading. So I know Dawn has started working on attendance, because she has this big poster chart paper with attendance dots on it for each month, and then she bought this, like little spinning wheel that the kids get a spin for or something. So that's the attendance, and was anything else working?
Um, no, I think that's it. I mean, just academic achievement. Mostly started math though. So I started them on some, some other math things that I had, so like math, facts, kind of like that. And for our next family night, we might do a spelling bee. I don't know how spelling bee works, so, but we're thinking about it, so.
Brought to YouTube videos.
Right.
I know. Do that, but they can't even sound as excited, so I was like, oh no, I gotta figure out how it works.
I can't remember which channel it comes on, but the National Spelling Bee, when they get down to the end, it's on TV, and it's really kind of cool to watch. Maybe we should have a district-wide spelling bee where then a kid comes from every school.
One highlight we have is that we have decent internet out there now, so we got the satellite internet.
Yes.
So that's been nice.
What's your numbers at both schools?
Um, we have like forty-five to fifty, but I only have one para. So it's been kind of tough. I've had to maybe tell some parents that I'm kind of full, because I don't have, like in my K two classroom, I think there's seventeen of them, and it's just her. And my three five, about the same, and there's one para in there, but she tries to help out, so.
What's your number?
I wanted to come out there, but it's just not there right now. I don't want to overwhelm like the little kids group and stuff, because they're so little.
What do you got at Rosebud, Mr. Mobson?
In terms of?
Student enrollment.
Two ninety-seven.
What do you have at TCS?
Five ten.
Five ten little rocks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kiana.
For Oak Creek, overall, I am pretty satisfied with our state report card. So with our monitoring process that we have from the state, we looked at these results last week during in-service. And two of the highlights that we had from our report, on the first page, it's how much did our students improve on the state test over the three years? So you can see those results in, on that first page, it's English. And they went from fourteen percent improvement to thirteen. They kind of leveled off. They were about the same, up until the end of last year, twenty percent improvement on the English Language Arts. But if you flip to the next page, it shows English again, but right below it is math. And our math, sky high. We had, we went from a fifty percent improvement to eighty percent improvement. And one of the things that kind of baffled us when we were looking at this data was how we're seeing the improvements on the state level, because this comes directly from South Dakota, the South Dakota starter site. We're seeing the improvements in their data and the tests that we take for the state, but it doesn't mimic what we're seeing in I-Ready. So that's our big mystery right now. We're trying to figure out why I-Ready is not showing this kind of growth that we're seeing on the state level. And this, even our state monitor is looking into this. Because again, with I-Ready, you should be seeing similar results. And so she's looking at all different kinds of things to try to figure out why they're so different. But like I said, overall, very proud, because this is on the state level. This is the state test. This is monitored by the state, so we can't mess with any kind of data here. This is straight out of their website. So our mathematics, we're seeing that, just that big jump from twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, twenty-four school year, by the end of last school year, thirty percent improvement. All of our students that are increasing their math. If you switch over to the third page, so it breaks it down, school average, district average, state average. Again, very proud of the math. Our school average is eighty percent improvement. That's higher than the state average of fifty percent. So our, our students are making gains and improving and at a higher rate, at a higher rate than the state right now on math. English Language Arts, you can see where, you know, our average, the district average, still below the state level, but overall, again, this, this is really good to see the improvement that our students are making. The next page is our attendance, and this, like, I don't know. When I saw this, I got really excited, because we did make a change. This is something that came up in our CNA a couple of years ago with attendance. And we arranged, rearranged our schedule, so that the beginning of every day, we start with our specials, because kids don't want to miss specials. Because kids don't want to miss specials. And our students, and this data right here shows that the kids are showing up on time, they stay there. Because in a small community, usually when they're there for the day, I mean, in the morning, on time, they're there for the whole day. So if you look at the attendance rate, it was in the 60, 65% in 21, 22. It dropped down to 40% in 22, 23. This is when we looked at that attendance and made some schedule adjustments. And put all our specials, every single day, they have a special right after morning meeting. And 23, 24, you can see that the, we're on the yellow line there, the attendance shot up to the 53%. So with our CNA, that's one of the things that we're looking at is keeping our day engaging for the students, which in turn, we're seeing that to increase our attendance. If students want to be there and want to take part in the activities that are going on, they'll make sure they're there. And we have parents calling in when they're sick. I mean, little kids, they make sure they, their parents are, call my school right away, I'm not going to be in today, so they make the calls. The blue line is the chronic absenteeism. And you can see that is, it went up again, 22, 23, which makes sense. But then it dropped as our attendance rate increased last year. So our chronic absenteeism went to 48%. And it was up in the close to 70% the year before. On the next page, it does show the breakdown of our school average for attendance, which is 53%, higher than the district average of 35%. State average is 86%. Chronic absenteeism, school average, 48%, district average, 72%, state average, 21%. So that was our results at the end of last school year that we just went over. Throughout our CNA process, and I'm not going to go through everything, our action plan is on the last two pages. So from our CNA process, last year, we looked at this information. We also looked at what the students and staff were doing during class time. And what came out big for us was engagement, student engagement. So our staff were teaching what they were required to teach. They were teaching all the curriculum that we have, but by doing that, they were taking the teaching out of teaching. It was scripted. So it was more so like doing the lesson, getting the lesson done, but they weren't bringing any creativity into that lesson. And so that came out in our CNA where we needed to focus on staff development in engagement. So we are working with the Kagan Institute. Both certified teachers went to a training this summer and they learned various strategies. And that is, our action plan is to work with engagement strategies. They meet once a week to go over, did the strategy work with the students? They collect data from the students, so the students have a survey. The little kids have a cute one. It's a, just a paper with the, how did this activity make you feel? They have the smiley faces on it. Where the older kids, theirs are more, you know, where they are open-ended questions, where they can share how they felt about the strategy that was used, specific to the strategy. And those strategies can be used in any subject. So anything from reading math, science, they can use it anywhere. And then again, the teachers get together, they have a planned time together, they have their own little PLC that they work together to go over these strategies and, you know, collect that data to see if they're being effective. That is what our state monitor is monitoring when she meets with us each month. She collects the data also and she goes through it and gives us all these graphs and stuff so that we have that as a tool. I don't have anything else. If there's question, for Oak Creek, I did bring achievements too, but if there's any questions on Oak Creek?
Give me an example of what you call a special for the kids.
Specials for kids. So on Mondays, they have counseling in the morning. And then on Tuesdays, they have PE. Wednesdays, they have music and art. Thursdays, they have a second round of counseling. So those are like the, what you would call like the electives in high school or the exploratories in middle school.
Okay.
How many students?
We have 27 students.
Do you guys have the parent group as well that we've been asking about or?
Um, yes, we, well, yes, we ended last year with our parent group and then due to some unforeseen circumstances, we lost a parent, like physically lost a parent that was on our team. And we're looking at to replace her right now.
I don't have, thank you, Tiana.
I have achievements.
You're doing it too?
Sorry, Lizzy. I heard it ding, weren't you timing me?
Timer went off.
Achievement School, very proud of our staff and students, our report card here. We are showing tremendous growth in our on-time graduation and high school completion. On-time graduation, when we first started talking about this three years ago, it was one of those things of how are you going to do on-time graduation when the students we're getting are already not on time? They're already two, three years behind their scheduled actual graduation. So we sat down, we did our CNA a year before the rest of the schools did. So last year was our first year of monitoring. We actually did our CNA the year prior. So this year is monitoring and we get to see those results in our graduation, high school completion. Our high school completion rate is 88% right now. Last year, we were at, our high school completion was at 50%. I mean, not last year, the year before. 22, 23, it was 50%, 23, 24, 88%. So that went up. Our on-time graduation increased from 21, 22 school year. And we are at 73%. We kind of leveled the last two years, so that's something that we're looking at. You know, we're still working on getting the on-time graduation, playing catch up with those students that are, you know, a couple of years behind. They're coming to us already behind. So that one, like I said, was kind of a, we were looking at it as impossible, but it isn't impossible because we're seeing the growth and we're seeing how we restructured our school, helping those students get back on track. On the second page, it shows our on-time graduation. And they are at 73% as shown in the graph before. District average is 51%, state average, 83. High school completion, we are at 88%. We are 3% away from the state average of 91. And we're going to do everything we can to get those kids going so that we pass that. We want to be past the state. We don't want to just be at where we are. So again, extremely proud of the work that the staff and students have put in to get, get this data for us. And that's one of the things, like, once you like start, keep going, you want to keep raising the bar. Like, I don't want to just stop there. I want us to keep going and keep pushing to get the students as far as we can. And then I didn't include that in here, but if I can get copies for you guys later. But one of the things that we're seeing is it's not just completion. So our ELA, we have students that are, I believe it was 10% away from what the average is for students scoring proficient and advanced on the state level. So we have a handful of kids that are proficient and advanced in ELA. And so that shows me that we need to work more on ELA, but we also need to work on the science and the math. We don't just leave it at this because we don't have anyone that are advanced and we still want to work on those areas. So our progress meeting was on September 10th. And there's an overview on that on the next two pages for you. One of the things I do want to point out is that we're still using the hybrid approach with our students. And we are also working on, while we started, five new classes. And that was one of the things that we wanted to bring in was those classes that are more engaging for students. So this kind of came through surveys with students, but also certifications that my teachers were willing to get for us. So the five new classes that we added are integrated science, meteorology, forensic science, tribal government. And then we have a project-based learning class, which allows students to venture off into different types of certifications. So we have some students that are doing some online certifications for cybersecurity, which these are all free courses, free certifications offered through Google. They even do them through Amazon. And there are a few even offered free out of Harvard. And I would have never known that if, you know, despite searching for free certifications. And so our students in that class, they do an interest survey. And from that, then they are directed to which sites to sign up for, for this class, for their certifications. One of the ones that I've been working on and trying to get parents on is a certified nursing assistant with SGU to get someone to come in and teach that course. We do have students that are interested in the medical field. And in the past, I have worked with Kailas husband on getting the EMT training. And students have to be cert maged, but our students are, you know, older, so they are going to be able to do that certification. So those are some of the things we're looking at within that project-based learning class. The last part of it, and I'm, that's the second to last page. One of the things that I had spoken with Roberta about, because our state monitors kind of suggested this. And when we started looking at things, then it made sense that one of the wishes that we're asking for from Achievement School is that the school become high school only. We have two attendance centers. So we have a middle school attendance center and a high school attendance center. And what we're looking at is for it to just be labeled as a 912 center. But that doesn't eliminate our 15 to 16 on up students that haven't finished middle school. What this would enable us to do is we would enroll them as freshmen in achievement. They wouldn't be off the hook on doing their middle school requirements. We would still do the recovery for middle school requirements. But it does enable us to catch them up on grade level because we can put them in electives. So they'll start getting high school credits in like PE or health, the classes that aren't core classes, because they still need that foundation in the middle school. They need to complete their middle school requirements to start the foundation for those math classes, science classes. So they would be freshmen, labeled as freshmen, but they're still going to have to meet their middle school requirements. So, you know, it doesn't eliminate the students that we would have that are old, too old to be in the middle school. So that's something that, you know, the state put into this report, it's the action two section of what would really help these kids get back on track. Because we would be able to start getting them elective credits at least in high school. And that's all I have.
So if they were a seventh grader, hypothetically, you had a 15-year-old seventh grader. And then roll as a freshman. How long do you, and they didn't have very good grades as a seventh grader. I mean, what if they were a repeat seventh grader at 15? And you put them in here and now they're classified as a freshman. How do you gain back all of seventh grade, eighth grade, in one year time for them to be a freshman?
That's all recovery through edge annuity. That's what, even the high school uses edge annuity for summer school and stuff to recover. So they would have those classes ongoing. They, they would do them while they're in school, but they could also have access to them outside of school. So their day.
Okay, and if they didn't meet it, then the following year, they would still be classified as a freshman?
As a freshman, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
And do you have a parent group?
Yes, we do. We have three parents and two, two staff members, including myself.
Cool.
What's your enrollment numbers?
Fifty-eight.
You're almost topped out.
And you're doing the two days on, two days off yet?
Yeah, yeah, the hybrid schedule. We're still doing that.
Sounds great.
Thank you, Tiana.
Thank you, Tiana.
Yeah. Do you have, do you have your tape on your computer?
First, I thought I'd bring some student work to you. Speaking of new schools. The students did a blueprint for you of the new school that they would, that they would like to see.
They're, they're all different, that new school. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Are they all different?
And Mr. Sheldon, Mr. France. Yes, they're all different.
I love the colors and the.
Joined in on the.
Oh, yeah. We can afford that.
Yeah, I got a playground and I got some parking lots. Did you get Mr. Watzke? Yours looks tiny details.
Kind of reminds me of the old school, actually.
Oh, wow. Wow, okay, let's shift them this way and then we can see. Well, that does look like the old school.
Who did this one?
Oh, okay. Maybe these are something we need to hold on to for down the road.
You're good. We're just on one screen, but.
15 security.
15 security.
15 security.
The video gaming room.
And the video gaming room.
School track and field, basketball court, playground.
Swimming place.
Swimming place, no one, no one.
Yeah, there's a swimming pool, I don't know. While you guys are.
Oh, movie theater.
I was like, I can do that for my five minutes, we're gonna start.
Okay, yeah, we're ready.
Uh, I think it's really important for us to include everybody that works at Spring Creek School. Those are teachers, there's our paras, there's our bus drivers, our cook, our secretary, our custodian, and our counselor. Just because on any given day, this person could be another, in another position on any given day. I felt it really important that we name everybody in the school. Our enrollment is 57 students. There's our current enrollment by grade as of today. Our goal, goal one still stays the same attendance. Our August attendance was 85%, September was 83%. We have 30 students meeting the 90% goal and seven students who are at 83% or better. We've also been, so last year, we did weekly incentives because of, you know, the lack of funding. We're going to stick with monthly incentives and we're also incorporating attendance t-shirts for the kiddos that are achieving that 90% attendance. Goal two. So this year, we really, well, last year, we really focused on attendance, getting those kids in the seats. This year, we want to focus on being a good relative. Students are taught what it means to be a good relative in the classroom through responsive classroom, interactive modeling, but also through the OSU's. We're trying to incorporate tickets. So being a good relative tickets, the kiddos. And this isn't technically responsive classroom, it's more of like a PBIS type thing. But when the students are caught being safe, respectful, and responsible during the day, they'll receive a ticket. And it can come from the cook, it can come from the bus driver. It doesn't have to necessarily be their classroom teacher. And we're also working on giving the kids t-shirts, not just, not just when they're being a good relative, but because we know they are a good relative for all, for all the kiddos. And then we have a weekly, weekly closing circle on Thursdays. Some more highlights, our fifth through eighth grade class went and completed a field study at the Badlands, which is pretty, pretty hot up there, so I was pretty proud they all came back. The RSC tribal highway safety program. The RSC tribal highway safety program came and did a presentation to the fifth and eighth grade about sobriety. They got to take the goggles on and try to walk the line, it was, they had a lot of fun, so. Here is a picture of our whole school closing circle on Thursdays. This one is led by Ms. Cindy and usually, all of the teachers have some sort of old closing circle. And here is our action plan for this year. So, the first, first thing that was prioritized this year is school culture implemented. And if you look in your, in your folder there, you'll see an agenda for what our school culture, they're called Focus Fridays. And that's just an agenda for what we do on Fridays. We look at each other's personalities and see how they either mesh or don't mesh with each other. And then, behind that, you'll see the staff survey too on what, there's the different categories there, I can't quite recall what they are. But they go from like the history of the school to working, collaboration with one another. And they're all half-percentageed by those two, so. The second thing that came out of our CNA was the universal protocols, routines, and expectations. And that's something that's ongoing. So, we're still really focusing on number one, but we're, I'm slowly working on the universal protocols. That way, I know Britt had a really good foundation, it's just they want, she wants us to put it in paper, like, in a binder. So, that's what number two is. This is all the data collection that's happening with our CNA. Calendar of trainings, the safety bill, surveys, staff-student surveys, observations, the facilitator observations. We had a meeting with Bobby, who's our CNA facilitator, and I felt this was pretty pertinent to share. We had a lot of hundred percents in some of our data. We had a hundred percent that said, "I like working at this school, I am proud to tell others that I work at this school." Overall, the principal has a positive influence on the quality of the teaching. So, everything was above, like, eighty-eight or above. It made me feel really good to feel like we're moving in the right direction, so. Here's some more celebrations. On more state students, our enthusiasm about being at this school. Our school is a true community, we value and support each other. You know, just the different things that are on those, those surveys. And this one was taken in the fall. Here are some of our smarter balance data. This shows, so our school average for English Lingua Darts is forty-three percent and our mathematics is at twenty-nine percent. And I think our score is a thirty-two right now. So, which is, it's increased a couple of points over the past couple of years. So, I mean, I mean, it's slow, but we're moving in the right direction. And here we go, it's our RCT fundraiser. At the back, at the back of your packet, I included a fundraiser form. We're trying to raise money for our, our RCT to attend the combination invitational. So, if you know any organizations or anybody that's willing to buy a ticket, I got the little tickets with me, so. And thank you for supporting us. And I think that's all.
So, Leslie, is this part of like a parent group thing or?
Sort of.
Do you have parents involved in this?
Yeah.
That's it. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Leslie. The reason I keep asking about parent group thing is, if you all, have you, I'm sure you all noticed on social media, the different things. There just seems to be an increased interest of parents wanting to group up together. I know Ospud has a group of parents that want to group up and do some fundraising for T-shirts. I'm just seeing more and more. And then, I just did with Amanda about this, about, you know, booster clubs, doing booster clubs for the different schools or district-wide one or something. Because it seems like right now, there's just an increased awareness or people wanting, parents and community wanting to be involved in the schools. And that's a big thing for us is to, we haven't had that for a long time, that fan support. So, I would encourage all of you, if you have parents that are wanting to do things, to raise money, to do things in your schools, now's the time, you know, where they feel more welcome coming into the schools.
Anything for them before I let them loose?
No, just thank you for giving up your time and coming to report.
Do you have any questions? It's why, I don't know if you were able to read the daycare one that I put in the-
When I pushed on it, it just came back up your regular report.
That's nice.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you about it, but I-
It put your daycare, it put your report twice.
It's a letter that went out, right?
There was a letter.
Yeah.
The letter went out on Friday.
We have a target opening date of the tenth. We have full-time applications turned in for seven, I think, so far. We've passed all the inspections, completed the requirements for getting opened, so.
I'm excited.
Exciting. And if you know anybody that has anything they want to donate, let us know. We're looking into purchasing some things that we-
Awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, people.
Thank you. And I guess that was my discussion, I don't want to know-
Yeah.
He's back on.
Thank you, Leslie, who was going to see you.
They just need to approve everything and then we get ideas. Then we won't start sweating.
The consent agenda, everything except G. Is there a motion?
Melissa, could I speak quick on the budget? I just want to kind of give an update. I owe it to you guys to keep me in kind of a projection on what's going forward. Roberta and I are working through, the count date was last Thursday. And in a big picture, as you're talking about the numbers, we don't have the details yet, but we're tracking down about two percent kids, that's forty kids we're down in the district. So, that is something that will directly affect our budget going forward. That's not a final number yet, guys, so we're just, I want to bring that to your guys' attention. That's something we're going to have to deal with. As we look forward to state funding, we were being told from the state associations that our funding going forward in the state is going to be determined on one of the initiative measures that has to do-
Twenty-eight.
With, with the food tax. And, and we're being told that if that would pass, it's going to come off our backs and reduce our funding. So, that is something that we have been told, I just want to bring it to your guys' attention.
Is that like a scare tactic or is that official for sure?
Well, I, it's not an official for sure by any means, but I always say-
I did get the email from the Associated School Board where they had a resolution and thing. And I guess I didn't feel comfortable with it just because of where we live.
I don't think we felt comfortable making that recommendation, that's why you don't see it.
Yeah, I, you know, we, we're, our kids are, you know, I, I just don't feel comfortable where we live to, when I know that that's something that would help kids to get better meals. But then, I mean, that's what I said, is it a scare tactic or is it a for sure? I mean-
I don't think that anything is a for sure. I just, I just think it's important that we're all in the same boat and working towards the same area. So, as long as you guys know and we've told you, I think that's what we need to do at this point. There's no, there's no certainty there.
Well, we're one hundred percent free and reduce meals here, right?
Yeah, but that-
No, no, I mean, that funding is different, I'm just saying, yeah.
That's a different funding source. So, I, I want to tell you that we'll be tracking that throughout the year.
So, what will it impact, what areas?
Everything.
Sounds like everything.
I mean, they're looking to take it, we've been threatened with taking away the four and a half percent sales tax that's gone to us for the last, I don't know, six years.
Did you, did you receive that email? I mean, if not, I ran it off, you can grab a copy of it, my office.
Yeah, Associated School Boards is the one that has been informing me.
Yeah. And if you go to the meeting, which is October- Or gone to school law. No, it's not on a Friday.
It's like the twenty-third, is it?
Is it the twenty-third at six in White River? And I think right now, I'm going, Amanda's going, Tim is going.
That's actually one of my questions to ask.
Yeah.
Twenty-third, six o'clock, because I have to register you all at the same time.
Yeah, we're, we're going.
So, you three for sure?
Yeah.
You'll be back to me?
I'll be back to Colorado.
Okay.
Okay, all righty.
And then, on the federal side, just quick, because impact data is very well supported on the hill. There are one, very few that received an increase, although, counting it small. But naturally, we did receive an increase, we did receive stable funding for recommended cuts. We're not looking at a substantial increase in the program, but any increase is a win in this current climate. We have no predictions until we get through the election. So, that's just something else to throw on everyone's slate as we move forward and we look at the murkiness of what state funding is going to look like going forward here. That's all I, I just wanted, I owed it to you guys to tell us-
Yeah, no, thank you for the update, John. And then, I see we also had the, for the design, the needs assessment of the high school. Was that something that needed-
That's a separate action item, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, when we get to that, well. Anything else on the consent agenda?
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
Except for the items that we're going to discuss.
G.
G has been polled, so with the exception of the G.
Moved by Tim, second by Deb, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, seven point two, the Todd County High School needs assessment. Is there a motion for this, so we can go to discussion?
Well, move.
Moved by Tim, second by Michelle, okay, what do you got for us on this one?
Well, this is what we've been working forward since our last committee meeting regarding facilities. So, this is the culmination of that.
I went through it and read it.
If approved tonight, we're going to have architects and engineers on site next Thursday and Friday to begin the process. So, it is moving. So, I'm just excited to say that, you know, this is a very necessary step when we start looking at a project within the scope of what we're talking about. So, this is an important step and we're moving forward with it. So, that's why the recommendation's coming across the way it is.
Does anybody have any question?
Does that all amount into the ballpark price of what we normally, what we normally charge?
Well, I think when you look at the, the size of the high school itself and the age of it and the amount of assessment work that they're going to do within the scope of this project, I think it's, I think it's within the price.
I thought it was pretty cheap myself.
I thought so too.
When you look at, you know, of course, being from the hospital and facilities when we were in it, this is, and that was years ago, I thought this was more than reasonable that they were asking.
I consider it a fair price.
Yeah, I thought it was very fair. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, seven point three, approve the Todd County High School overnight trip for inclusivity. Is there a motion?
I'll move that.
Moved by Michelle.
I'll second.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Question.
Oh, question?
I asked Roberta to take a look and see what that is.
It's the one that Shelby Schmidt takes them on, she takes a group of them and it's a leadership and human relation and leadership retreat. Last year, we sent about five or six, maybe, they pretty much go every year.
And historically, they have been going for years.
Yeah, and they usually come back and give us a report and thank you cards and whatnot, so.
It's actually pretty neat thing when they come, I'm surprised you haven't ever heard of presentation.
I did hear one of them, now that you talk about what it is, I remember what that is now.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Prove an overnight trip to SDSU and the University of Minnesota Morse.
Move.
Moved by Tim.
I'll second.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to go into executive session for SDCL one, twenty-five, two, one. Moved by Deb.
Second.
Second by Michelle at six-thirty-four, all in favor? Yes.
Yes. Any questions for me in that?
You're free to go.
Don't run out the door now.